And I've heard from the community that we want to improve communication and transparency. This is the first thing we can do by stopping the spending of our money. We need to first have conversations with everybody to see what they want, what we can do. Now, the 500,000 that we gave for demolition, we know that everybody feels that way. The 500,000 that we gave to redo the parks, you know, everybody wants new parks. We hear complaints about the West End Park, we hear complaints about the City Park. So now, I push to have a survey where everybody in the community can say, "What do you want to see for your park?" I heard at the West End Park, you want to have a shelter, there's not a shelter at their park. I heard at the City Park, even the idea they want to do a zip line from the museum to the City Park. But hey, we need to listen to everybody's ideas and figure out what they want to do. So that's why we pump the brakes on that ARPA funding. I was 100% against spending four and a half million, but it's my job as a City Council member to listen to everybody. I will not shut anybody out. And again, I can't stress this enough, just because the city makes a decision and gives us a proposal, that does not mean the council is going to do it. It's our job to stand up to them and stand up for the people, and that's why we didn't spend that money. And we still have lots of ARPA money that has not been spent yet. We got about 15 million, we've only spent about one and a half. And we earmarked some money, but that can change too. If we get new ideas that make really great sense and that help our community, we'll change the allocation of that funding. But some of those go to stormwater, we had so many people complaining about their stormwater. I had a lady who lives on the West End who came to me, I went to her house, saw the stormwater, and now the city's going to fix that. And I just really want to show-
Time, sorry.
I don't, I'm not very versed on the complete end works of dealing with the ARPA money and how it's allocated, where it's going, everything. Just a little bit that I've heard, the money that's available, I think it's important to put it back into the community. I think they've done a great job with what they've done uptown. But I feel as though we have to grow the surrounding community along as we grow uptown. We have to put back, put it back into the housing market and the houses on the West End, on the South Side. They have to reach the same stability as the other areas in our city. That way, we can be more marketable to outside, surrounding cities, outside people who want to come to Martinsville. And we get a great crowd, especially the race weekend, people come to Martinsville for different things. So they need to come here and see the opportunity that they can grow a house. And there's a school system here for them to be a part of. And I think that's where we need to put the money to more specifically.
This is the topic that put me in the chair I'm in right now. I think I was the first person who spoke at a council meeting about this, and it's certainly not a race. And I appreciate Danny, he's been extremely sincere about everything right up front, which I love him. He has indeed made similar remarks that, you know, I live the same sentiment. Where I want to go with this is-
Alright, for this next question, you still get two minutes, but it can probably be answered in 30 seconds. About how many people have talked with you about reversion? And out of the number of people who have, citizens, general citizens, out of the number who have talked with you about their feelings on reversion, what percentage said that they were for it and what percentage said that they are against it? We'll start with Jennifer and conclude with Danny.
So I feel like you prompted us that we have to be quick. So I've talked with many citizens about reversion. I don't have an exact number, but it's people everywhere, from the store, on social media, in messages, at my house, just everywhere. And I say the percentage is a little bit of just 50/50, it just depends on who you're talking to. And this is across demographics, this is across people. But the biggest thing for me is, what I've heard consistently, is transparency and communication. So that's one of my priorities if I'm reelected to council. How can we improve our communication and our transparency? Number one thing that I've tried to do was I promoted for us to hire a public information officer. I don't know if you guys know Kendall Davis, but you soon will get to know him, because I know he's knocking on the door, he's talking with people about what we can do to do a better job of communicating reversion. And I've heard one thing that I would want the city to do, that I should discuss, is just have a pro and a con list. Just something simple, we don't have to get in these weeds about reversions. Just have a pro and a con and let the citizens decide. So that's why I'm excited that now the citizens will be able to vote on reversion and decide what they want to do. So I've talked to many people about reversion. Some of the people are here in this room today. And I look forward to having continuing conversations about reversion. When they ask me questions, I give them my opinion, I try to give them numbers, I try to give them feedback about it. But it's, I do want to say one thing, that I hope that regardless of what anybody on council feels about reversion- Okay. Regardless of what anybody feels on council about reversion, we have to know that there's a citizen out there that feels this way. So we need to make sure that we remain respectful of others, we're listening, and we're having productive conversations about how we can move forward. Whether you're for or against reversion, on council, there's somebody who feels that same way. So we have to make sure we're listening, understanding, and just having better communication. And that's why I'm promoting that we continue with Kendall, he knocks on the door, he talks to people, and we just do the best we can to communicate what is reversion, what, and the reversion column.
I can count on one hand how many people I've talked to who wants the reversion to happen. So I mean, it's maybe two. Everybody that I've talked to is very against the reversion. They don't want to lose their city status, they don't want to lose their school systems. So it's, it's really the reason that it got me going is being against reversion. But what we have to understand is when I say I'm against reversion, because all of you got your own reasons for it or against it. When I say that I'm against reversion, I want to stop it. I do want to stop reversion. But what I want for everybody to know is that, that when I say I want to stop it, I don't mean that it's going to be a snap or a fang. I mean that I want to reach out to our board of supervisors, I want to reach out to Martinsville City Public Schools, and every county public school board, and I want for all of us to come together and work together and figure out how to do this amicably, so that no one is taking a loss on this thing. We need to come to a stop with this and use some common sense with this and figure out, how can we make money? How can we do some of that change? How can we move forward? And also, we need to make some contingency plans. Okay, we do have, if the country does have a bad financial year, how are we going to act to this? And how can we do it together? And number one, we need to have our citizens involved. And we need to keep them in the loop all the way as we go through it. If that means we need to have a meeting every other week, then that's what we need to do, because that's what City Council should get paid to do, represent their citizens. So for reversion, whether you're for it or against it, educate yourself on it. But if you are against it, then just know that it is a process, and that I want to go through that process with everybody involved.
In my experience, reversion is probably the second, distant second. Most often asked question to be, the first is, are you the dumb-looking guy with all the dogs? I didn't know who you are, and it's so nice to finally see you in person. I think maybe I'm trying to be very fair here, I think I've maybe talked to eight people who support reversion. Typically, all of them have been, and I'm thinking about it, I've pulled maybe 300. I've knocked on a lot of doors, like I said earlier. A lot of them are previous or current members of government. Many of their cases I have looked through, and to be frank, found them wanting, and they have actually bolstered my case against reversion, if I'm being quite honest. I have brought my laptop for a reason. If anyone would like to go through and take a look at the case with me, I'm happy to share it with you. One thing I do want to know, I've harped on the competence part of this a lot. And I think that in media, where we have short space, particularly in print, the quotes that you read make this sound like we are binary, we're all in and we're all out. I have said this over and over again. I'm willing for somebody to make the case to me for reversion, particularly on the merits of the finances. I've tried, I've looked it over, I feel like the city did not make the case. We had just heard a comment about maybe we should have put together a pro and con list. Call me fiscally conservative maybe, or a business person, but wouldn't we do that before we spent all this money? And exercised all this- exercised all of this effort, this heartache, to look at what this theory's gone through, look at what we've done with our relationship with the county. And when I speak to this, and one of the reasons I don't dive into this too deep on what I think consolidation or revenue savings or expense savings might look like, I want them to get a break from us for a little bit, so we can actually have a productive discussion. I just think it's the competence issue. Would I be one to look at it down the road, sure, but I want to part on one thing, I'll play up 10 seconds. I looked at all the documents that the city prepared, I looked at all the documents the county prepared. The county actually made an effort to present their case. I went through and checked the numbers on my own, I felt like their case stands up. I feel like the city didn't. If the city knew their case, this might be a different discussion for me.
So much for a 30-second answer for everybody, but I was saying, one-third of the people in the city probably come against, for reversion, a third against, and a third that just didn't have enough information to make that final decision. And I think that going forward, if three judge panels so rules that it's in the best interest of the city, county, and the economy of Virginia, then we'll have a year to answer these questions. Now, I'm opposed to the thing we had at the New College Institute, where it gave the appearance that the city leadership was talking down to everybody. I did feel bad about that, and I don't think that that's very productive, and I hope we won't have anything that looks like that again. But I think that there's a reason that there's 49 states that don't have independent cities, and that in the state of Virginia, there's 37 independent cities, probably right now financially half of them need to revert back to a town or maybe a second-class city. I've given some solutions to members of the General Assembly, where possibly we could do, eliminate the school system, get back to the county, get rid of the sheriff's department. There are municipalities in Virginia that have that situation. Let the county for school purposes use the city's composite index, which would generate more money. Possibly get the General Assembly to, in this big surplus year, to let us eliminate the meat pole tax, compensate that for us for 10 years. The city would remain a city, we would not be able to annex. And I never understood the argument, the original argument about, that the two committees came up with of this 10-year revert, annexation more or less, we can't afford to annex. And I think that problem off the table would make this a whole lot easier to work with.
Done?
10 seconds.
I yield my 10 seconds.
I believe that wraps us up on that one. Next question, we will start with Elsie and conclude with Jennifer. Do you believe the Five Points Housing Neighborhood Project was a success? If another project like this were to come before you as a City Council member in the next term, would you support it and why?
Five Point Project, I think it was at the value. I look at it from a front perspective, front perspective, by real design, microscope, my front perspective specialist. I'd say number one, it does put a citizen who does move there at a safety risk. It's too close to the road, I think it's too priced for that particular area. I think it would have been a better job if we would look at Five Point Project of that statue. I think there's a lot of land out there in the spruce that would probably serve, do a better service of that. If we want to talk about Five Points, you have to, you have to look at the area that you put it in, and on Madison Street, that area right there, there's one way in and sort of one way out. And I think it just clogged up that community a lot more than it did to do anything to help it in that area. So I think moving forward, I think we need to take a little bit more time and look at the price point the house is going to be in, and the land that we have to put those houses in. And we need to start with an economic development plan that includes CPTA, the private business, environmental design, because those are the things that's going to help us down the road when it comes to crime, the lighting, the roads, the property maintenance issues that you'll eventually have.
Lord, help me. I do not even know where to begin with these. So my foray into Martinsville began with me buying an historic estate that had been run into the ground, that I very painstakingly over years put back together, based on the charm that I talked about earlier. Martinsville's a great place to lay, but we put a little bit of elbow grease into it. I look at those things and sincerely try to wonder, if I were to try and construe and dream up the worst possible solution to a real issue, it might look something like that. It truly might. I have pictures of them, I'm very into real estate. I went through them, and one of the things you have to know going through them, and I drove through Church Street, or where there's a billboard, before their foundation's board or anything else, my realtor and I look at each other and we say, hmm, we're going to plop a cottage development in the statistically most busy intersection of Martinsville. Maybe they're going to look a lot cooler than we think. And then they, yeah, they look worse than you ever could have imagined. And I went in and lived the experience. Every, if a bike rides by, a three-year-old on a tricycle, and you're on the couch, you're going to hear it. You're trying to do anything at night, and a truck comes by, you're going to wake up 16, 17 times a night. The way they were positioned is not accurate. The cost, I don't know where the cost of those things came up with. We are still, even in this market, selling brick ranches for comparable prices. If you, the right way to do this is the way that a lot of people have done and how we've grown this community. We have the beautiful homes, they really can't be recreated. Come in, fix the flooring, update the appliances, put some paint on the walls, replace the roof. I'm working with a group of people right this second looking at a lot of properties like this. And we've got a cookie cutter approach that I think is about 40 grand to make a nice, livable home that those things frankly will never even approach.
I understand, I understand one of the houses is going to be closed over tomorrow, so if somebody's buying it, they're fairly expensive, and I just don't understand the idea of putting them there. You know, Aaron, I remember when he first, I guess the first time he went to Dick Simmons' house, and that the Fox, local Fox network wanted to interview people that had moved to Martinsville, and they wanted to do a story about it, so I brought him over there. And we had a good conversation over there, and showed what you were doing over there. And I seen you sold that house, you moved on to another property. So I knew that there were plenty of properties here that we need to fix up instead of tearing down. And that was part of the housing summit that I had, and we went around it, the half million dollars that we have not going to be just for tearing houses down, we're going to try to develop our houses to be saved. I helped a guy over on Winfield Street, he bought a house that was in just horrible shape. And he flipped it, sold it, I think he said for 60,000, and the guy that bought it got it on market for 100,000. And what we had to do, we had to get the neighbors across the street who were selling drugs and had the utilities disconnected, we had to get that taken care of. But once we got that taken care of, this guy buys the house, then somebody comes in, "Let me fix the house next door." And that's how this thing starts. And so, back to Five Points, so I think we sold two of the, two of the houses. I think they're overpriced. Well, I don't know which house was sold, but anyway, the house that was sold, sold full price. It's not a, it's based on income, personally, plenty of income. So that wasn't a decision the council made. It was a decision that the administration helped Nationwide Homes with. So that's not a, not a decision that we made. But I know, since we own the property, the city owns the property, we, some of the zoning requirements weren't there.
I'm extremely disappointed in the Five Points Project. Of course, we wanted to hear that we have affordable housing, we know that's something that's needed in Martinsville. And I was excited when I first heard about this project that's going on the West End and having new development. And then I saw the placement of the housing and was extremely devastated and disappointed. I have a lot to say to the city administration, and you may not see me on TV wreaking havoc or causing a scandal behind closed doors, I stand up for people and I say what needs to be said. But I do think that we need to continue to see what we can do to redevelop some of the places that we have here. We need to work with our uptown business owners, that's one thing that people talk about. They have a lot of good things that happen, we diversified uptown, we have a lot of things happening. I also think about the houses that are just across the city. When we give that 500,000, Martinsville, when we give that 500,000 in demo, we can demo properties or we can try to rehab properties to see what we can do to just bring more people here. And I just wanted to briefly go back on reversion. I know that some of the candidates talked about the numbers. So we talked about, we've heard a lot of whose numbers you would trust, cities or the commissioner revenues. So we have an independent audit that we do every year, it takes the city's numbers and the commissioner revenues' numbers. And when we look at this audit, over the past 20 years, Martinsville only has had a 0.8% growth over 12 years. When you think about that, if you have a thousand dollars, you've only gotten 80 more dollars over 12 years. That's how much Martinsville has increased, whereas in the counties, it's increased over 4%. So that was the purpose for reversion, is to think about, we're fiscally stunning where we're going. Even when we have new people coming in, and I'm excited for the growing population that we have. I think with my eight years on council, we pushed for that. But when these people are coming in, they're not going in, we don't have brand-new housing developments, we don't have new homes, and I would just encourage and ask other candidates, if we don't revert, which is fine, what are we going to do? Are we going to have to increase our taxes 15% to cover this rate? What are we going to do if we don't revert? So that's what I would have to ask, just to come up with other solutions of what we can do.
How, can I correct something we said? Okay, it was said that the city, it was said the city population had got 30,000. The largest the population has ever gotten to during, at the end of the census, was right under 20,000, and never topped over 30, never topped over the 20,000 total, as an official census number.
Okay, thank you, candidates. That is the first rounds of questions that I was asking, but I am only one person in the room. It's y'all's turn. What we would like is for people to come to the podium, and then you can each walk up to the podium and just wait a turn. And I would first ask, I'll point to who will ask first. You come on up and you can have the next question. And what I would like is to give-
There are two podiums, one of each other.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd like to get your name, and I'll make sure I write it down with the correct spelling, but that's more for the media. And then we will, let's see, we started that one with Elsie, so this one will be for Aaron. So your name, please?
My name's Ronald Harrison. And this is an important question. Here it is, you all have a plaque of Martinsville Seven Up There. Now, if you were elected to council, could you bring to the table that those seven young men who were executed, their lineage was cut off? So could you bring to the table that they get restitution to their family? If y'all have all this money, y'all say y'all have it, get some of that to leave. And, second question. Here it is, if you get elected, could you come down to the West End and stop at 4th Street? And you'll see the sidewalk has discontinued to the rest of the residents. And you know, we pay taxes, and we've been paying taxes. I've been, I've been 13th press for court since 1970. And it's still in the same situation, no sidewalks. We, as black people in West End, if we're going to walk, we got to walk in the street, like we're not human. But if you take and look in the other communities, they have sidewalks. So where is the tax dollars for one that we, as citizens of Martinsville, can't have the same opportunity that the rest of the city have?
Sure, I'm going to take your first question first. I actually want to take your second question first, well, it's refreshing my brain, because, Ronald, did you attend the West End Community Meeting?
Yes, I did.
And Mayor Lawson had mentioned the sidewalk program, it was basically citizen funding, and that's how we got some of the sidewalks.
And it was the, not sidewalks.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. If you have ever gone down Mulberry, and I heard some comments that night that, you know, Mulberry has these things and other parts of the community don't, there are not a lot of sidewalks through various parts of the city. My inkling, this kind of goes to your first question, is I thought the whole crux of us being here and having this reversion discussion is that we didn't have all this money that we were talking about. So when I hear your questions, the very first thing that comes to my mind is, and I've done this, and I spin my laptop around, you can see what I'm looking at. I've been scanning through the city budget. I want to look at exactly what's going on. Like I mentioned earlier in this meeting, I'm still just a private citizen. And we have known, and how hard is it to get information about what's going on in our city? And the information that I actually get, I don't know if I can trust it, to be quite honest, because I've gotten information, and I go back and talk to someone else in the government, and I'm said, I'm told, actually, you can't listen to that from that person that's not accurate. So I hope you'll at least respect the courage a little bit when I say, because I'm not going to just say something to make you nod and feel good about what I said. I sincerely do not know. I got to get in there and see what we're actually working with. Someone here is going to be concerned, several someones, I recognize some of your faces, who are advocating for reversion for the financial impact. This is not a political thing to me. I don't want to revert, I don't want to be anti-reversion, because I want to be a politician instead of up city council table. When I do, I'm anti-reversion, because I don't think it's good for the city. I think it's going to handle very poorly for us. So part of what I'm going to do is, I'm a technical guy, I'm a wonk guy, I've run businesses, I've had to manage budgets and make payrolls and all that stuff. I'm going to get in there, I'm going to eviscerate that budget, I'm going to look at what we've got after, and then we can talk about what we want to do, I'm going to wrap up with one thing. I mentioned this earlier, and I'm dead-set sincere about it.
Time.
The growth comes from West End Martinsville, in my estimation. So that's where I want to start our development.
Okay, I'll answer the first question first. I wonder if the Martinville Seven were convicted by a Commonwealth of Virginia, and any compensation or retribution should come from the state of Virginia, not the city of Martinsville. Because the court system is run by the state of Virginia. Number two, I don't think there's many neighborhoods that would like sidewalks, especially, it shortens the side, size of the yard. If you're talking about curb, and you've got it over there, something that we should do with that. We have some, have some money we've set aside, and that should be part of the sidewalk. But a lot of people don't want it, because then when it makes the yard smaller. And I know with Highland Ridge, and I lived growing up on Grayson and Highland, and we had the shared sidewalk, the family had to pay half of it. It really cut down on the yard, but after we'd done it, I think that it was kind of, it got-
After it was over with.
But I think that the sidewalk is not probably what most people want, they want curb and the gutter. We definitely have to look at that.
Resuscitation from the family would be from the Commonwealth, that's typically how that goes. But I understand exactly where you're coming from. I advocated and lobbied for the whole council to put that marker up. We had not done anything to honor Martinsville Seven and what happened. Even though it's a very tragic thing, I would beg to argue that around the nation, around internationally, that's what Martinsville is most known for, and that's awful. We need to change that. But first and foremost, we do have to acknowledge that that happened, and that was a wrong thing happened. So I was thankful that I could support the Martinsville Seven. 4th Street sidewalks, I've spoken at several council meetings to say, "What can we do to talk about the sidewalks?" I've asked, I know that the mayor talked about curbing the gutter and the program that used to happen, so I'm going to continue to see what we can do and advocate to see, what can we do to get sidewalks? What's the cost? Is it going to take people's properties away? What's going to happen with that? We've definitely had many, I've had many conversations where I've thought it up at the end of council in my remarks. I know people want sidewalks, I walk it. You see me walking, I see you, I'll talk to you about it. So I just want to just see what we can do, those are conversations we still need to have. And I mean, I will say Danny is right, I've heard some neighborhoods say they don't want it, but if 4th Street does, who are we to not investigate and see what we can do to get it? And I just wanted to just talk about some of the tax rates in the city. I do want to talk about how, another thing about our revenues is we don't want to raise taxes in the city. So because we're not raising taxes in the city, my entire tenure on council, our real estate property has stayed the same, our personal property has stayed the same. So even though we have increasing pressures about the budget and trying to balance it, I have not voted to increase any taxes in the city. We did do an increase in the meals tax, but that was only because that goes to pay for the schools and that goes to pay for capital. We've seen lots of infrastructure issues that are going on in the city. So I have supported to raise the meals tax to support our schools and to support our citizens. But if you can afford to go out, you can afford to pay a little bit more to support our kids and support our schools. So I just wanted to say that that's what I do. But I definitely look into that to you, I'll bring it up at the next council meeting that we have next Tuesday. that we have next Tuesday, what can we do about these sidewalks on Fourth Street, and what our next step needs to be.